Good morning, everyone. Happy New Year and welcome. Call to order. This special meeting, January 3rd, 2019, at the Grant County Board of Commissioners. Please join us in the pledges. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we'd like to welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to two minutes. Please wait to be recognized by the chair. Request that you, because of the number of people who would want to speak, that we limit your topic to the subject at hand. And I'd also like to ask that you please keep your comments positive. So, public comment, by raise of hand, and the chair will recognize you. Oh, yeah. One more thing, on the two-minute time, Commissioner Edwards will be timing. And because of the short two minutes, there'll be no warning, just when your time is up, she'll let you know. And then, if you could wrap it up very quickly, it'd be appreciated, so that we can get this rolling. It's gonna be a beautiful day outside, and we don't want to miss that later. So, public comment, please. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Grant County Commissioners.
Oh, your mic. And please state your name for the record.
I'm Linda Peacock. Thank you, Grant County Commissioners, for allowing members of the public audience to time to speak. Most of you know me. I have been a Grant County resident since 1963, and in New Mexico since 1956. Think that classifies me as almost a native. I know most of you, especially those who spent most or all of their life in Grant County. I say this to set the framework that helps you understand where I'm coming from. I recommend Gabe Ramos as our choice to put forth to our new governor as a replacement for Howie Morales. Gabe will be tasked with finishing out Howie's senate term, which ends in 2020. Gabe has proven to be a moderate, John F. Kennedy Democrat, while serving on the Grant County Commission for two terms. He has been willing to cross party lines, been considering matters before the commission to make wise decisions that will represent the wishes of all Grant County citizens. Until the establishment of the five-person commission, he was my district commissioner. I had a cellphone. I know where he works, and I know where he lives. He was, and is always, open to what I had to say. He will do well by us in Santa Fe, because he will continue to cross party lines, voting for bills that will be felt unofficial to us all. He will listen and respond to us in Grant County, like he has historically done while serving on the Grant County Commission. He's not a perfect person. He's made mistakes. So have we. We all learn from our mistakes, time. Thank you. What? Come on, you fix this.
Other public? Yes, sir. Mr. Griffin.
Good morning. I'm Glenn Griffin. And if I got my count right, there's about 130 people here today. Pretty important meeting. I want to thank Commissioners Elise Edwards and Harry Brown for defending democracy at the December 20th, 2018 commission meeting. They fought back hard against the surprise political push to make outgoing Commissioner Gabe Ramos our representative for State Senate Position 28. And I want to thank Chair Billy Billings for finally derailing the Ramos Railroad. I was here. I saw it. I know Gabe Ramos. I was on Gabe's Grant County Commission Ecological Watershed Committee for four years. We never visited a watershed or thinned a single tree for fire prevention. But we do have great plans for Lake Ramos at Fort Baird. And when I had questions on the county ecological watershed committee, I never once got a return call or email response from the chair. Not once. I wish our nominee the best in representing Grant County, and look forward to their help in ending trapping on public lands, as has happened in our neighboring states of Arizona and Colorado. And I need the nominee's help in stopping Grant County from being charged $446 to remove a squirrel under the county's Wildlife Services contract. Thank you.
Public comment, by raise of hand, please. I think I see one back there. Yes, right there. Thank you.
Ronnie Sue Halsner, Pino Salto. Thank you for this opportunity, and for not changing the date of the meeting to before January 1st. And congratulations to the two new commissioners. The commission has an important opportunity today, to give Governor Grisham two diverse candidates for Howie Morales's senate seat. Gabriel Ramos is already nominated by Katrina Socorro Contis. Nominating Mary Hotvet or Saya Hemphill would provide an additional highly qualified candidate. Qualities I seek in a senator include leadership, communication skills, and conflict management skills. Leadership includes integrity and building relationships. Communication includes use of various communication styles for positive interactions. Conflict management includes identifying opportunities for agreement. Both Mary and Saya come from therapist professions, where communication and conflict management skills are inherent. Their experience and interests are aligned with Governor Grisham's emphasis on education, healthcare, government accountability. Both are longtime Grant County residents. Saya has been a school psychologist for 16 years. She has personal and professional strengths in education, healthcare, and the environment. Her profession and degrees give her extensive communication toolbox, and ability to dedicate herself to learning about each state issue that may arise. As an avid outdoor enthusiast, as well as an ALDO educator, she will be knowledgeable in environmental issues. Mary is experienced in larger arenas such as politics, education, labor, healthcare, long-term planning, and accountability. Political experience includes chair of Grant County Democratic Party, and worked with the Indiana University Voters Alliance. She has taught at WNMU, and worked with the American Federation of Teachers in Illinois. She was president of the American Association for Marriage and Family Therapy, and coordinated their 20-year plan. Thank you. Can I turn this over?
Thank you for the public comment. Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Janet Wallet Ortiz, and I lived in Grant County for 36 years. In light of what the governor said in her address to the state, I want to encourage you all to recommend a replacement senator that has the same vision as she sets forth. Her address was heartening, and encompassed most of the main issues facing our state, and other states too. In fact, national analysts are watching New Mexico closely, that the Democrats are clearly in control. What will this situation bring to our state? Well, it depends. If the Dems pull together and put the basic needs of all as priorities, such as clean access to clean water, clean air, protected lands, protected rivers, renewable energy that brings in a New Mexico Green New Deal, best practices in education at all levels, and funding, and in Michelle's words, "a safety net that lifts people up." If the Dems pull together, we can accomplish much in New Mexico. But to even hope to attain any of these goals, however, we need Democratic congresspeople on board, working together to show Republicans how it is done, when it is done right. The governor insists that we need to work together to better New Mexico healthcare, critical social programs, a higher minimum wage, and grow in business inside New Mexico. She wants everybody to chip in, whether they, quote, "have been here for 12 generations," or whether they just arrived last week. How can we shield ourselves as much as possible from upcoming recessions, radical climate change, and a broken healthcare system? Please, recommend the woman today who will support the governor's initiatives completely, ensuring that her ambitious plans will be implemented, and not foiled or slowed down by someone who is divisive and obstructionist. In Michelle's words, "We need a revolution of attitude that says, 'It is time for us to thrive.'" Thank you, and I enjoy a cooperative New Year to you all.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Danny Pena, of the District of Grant County. And I see your job today as nominating the person with the best chance of being appointed by the governor, representing the Senate. But that person is not Mr. Ramos. He has too many negatives associated with him. Personally, he has been my commissioner since I moved here, and I have not found him especially approachable, or willing to discuss opposing those of you. More important than my personal opinion is, he's a twisted and entrenched supporter of huge reversion, a project the governor has vowed to do all that she can to stop. And one of the things she can do to help stop it is nominate a senator who's going to be opposing her on that issue the first day. So, if you send, if you send Mr. Ramos's name, she will reject it, and ask you to submit more names, so that she has a real choice. That process can take a long time, and we risk having any senator replaced when the legislative session begins, called a phase now. But second, Mr. Ramos has earned reputation in this community as an unethical businessman. When I came here five years ago, I was looking for homeowners' insurance, and several people volunteered that I should wear Mr. Ramos's practices. Nominate someone to be a senator that has that reputation, and otherwise will take his city office, so please nominate someone else. Someone who will have our trust and respect from the first day they're sworn in. You have many good candidates to choose from. The women candidates here today are all especially capable, and I encourage you to fairly and objectively evaluate with their strong qualifications, and nominate one of them. Any one of them would be immediately appointed by the governor, without hesitation, and would serve us well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, and I would like the Commissioners backing on this. I'm gonna speak with the attorney. Thank you again. Just a reminder, we're requesting positive comments, not negative. Next. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'm Herb Tremo, and I reside in Silver City, and have been a longtime Grant County resident. I'd like to say a few words on behalf of our public servant, and current Grant County Commissioner, Mr. Gabriel Ramos. Mr. Ramos is a lifelong Grant County resident. He is one of us, completely. He was born in Silver City, and raised in Hurley, and he is married, and is a husband and father to two young children. He attended our local public schools, and earned a bachelor's degree in Business Administration from New Mexico Western University. Mr. Ramos has been a longtime public servant to this community. Gabe has successfully held various public offices, from serving on town council seats, school board member, youth sports manager, served two terms as a successful county clerk, and at the present is the leader, as the successful chairman of the Grant County Commission. Questionable use of AWSA funds seems like a moot point at this time, as the use of a portion of these funds will link the mining community and Silver City together. This is supporting the common good for the majority of the people of Grant County, and the needs of the United States Air Armed Forces, in this case, the United States Air Force. And in the interest of national security, having a positive position on exploring these armed forces needs is quite commendable. Mr. Ramos has been an advocate for the public making full use of our public forest lands by speaking out about keeping the current forest roads open, and helping in avoiding any questionable or end or unnecessary road closures in our forests. And as important and crucial as this senatorial position is to all the people--
Certainly, tag this up. Thank you. Next. Yes, sir. Yes, you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Garwahal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. Congratulations to you newly elected officials. You guys have a job and a half coming on you. And Commissioners, you have a tough job coming upon you this morning. I stand here, as I stood with Gabriel 20 years ago, when you were our county clerk. I know this man like the back of my hand. It's been a long time, but it's, I will stand here with him today, and I ask, and I pray, that you continue and support Gabriel for this position, because he is like a rhino. Tough skin, and that horn to move the garbage out of his way to get the job done. I know this family, Gabriel, Pathee, your kids, Mr. and Mrs. Ramos, Davy, and the rest of the Ramos. I played Barney for Erica's, I believe it was her second birthday. That's how well I know this family. And I continue to support Gabriel, and I, once again, I pray, so that Grant County can continue forward. What he says is he will get the job done. In June, the primary elections, Gabriel was out there campaigning for individuals on the county commission, working hard for you guys, in order for the commission to continue moving forward, as he left this December 31st. Gabriel, congratulations on an awesome servant that you've been, and I hope that you continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
My name is Luis Agüero, resident of Hurley, New Mexico. I want to go ahead and thank you Commissioners for allowing me to speak at this time. I would like to go ahead and speak about, we're hearing a lot of things about Democrats, Republicans. It's not about that. I want you people to understand, we need to send somebody up there, that is going to be able to represent our area, and to be able to go ahead and do the job that is required. Mr. Ramos, I am very appreciative. He ended up working on Diaz Avenue. He ended up being very instrumental in getting the lighting system, getting the sidewalks, and getting that street repaved. People have enjoyed that. That has helped us as far as crime, that has helped us as far as activities, for people to be able to utilize those sidewalks. And we need someone like that, that will go ahead and see projects through to their completion. Thank you very much. I do ask that you send Mr. Ramos's name up this year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Torres, and I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity. And I just want to ask that you send Mr. Ramos's name up to Santa Fe. I have known him for six years. I've worked for him for six years. And he's just been a wonderful person, and he has done so much for our community. And I see him on a daily basis, every single day, and I see the love that he has for our community. And he has worked very, very hard for the community and for citizens, and I just want to thank him for that. And I just, I just want to say that he has my utmost confidence to do great, to take the seats of, for Howie Morales, as I said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
I'm Hugh Epping, and I feel like I'm attending a testimonial. I think, I would like to see our representative carry on the tradition of Howie Morales, emphasizing education, and local environmental issues. I think we have the opportunity to select a new senator who will carry on the educational emphasis that Senator Morales had. And I think we need to look at the other candidates, not just Mr. Ramos, and learn, and take advantage of their educational experience, in the education field, also in the environmental field. And I think we would be better served by having a representative that will carry on Howie Morales's activities, rather than go in a separate direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir. Er, I'm sorry. I can't see your face. With the hat, yes. Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, county staff, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Nancy Gordon. I've lived in Silver City 27 years now. I enjoy hiking and fishing. I used to be a bow hunter, till I got geriatric. I haven't heard the positions of any of the other candidates, but would like them to address a couple of issues that others might not bring up, like their support for hunting and fishing in this area. This is an important part of our culture and our economy. I'd like to see strong support for projects to improve hunting and fishing in our area, as well as continued access to state lands. I'd like to hear their views on Fort Baird, since the state has basically abandoned it. And I actually like the idea of a fishing pond at Fort Baird, if it's feasible. Lastly, I'd like to know if they can be open-minded about a diversion on the Hila River. There is a need for a permanent diversion structure at the top end of the valley for the irrigation ditches, so someone doesn't have to go in with a bulldozer and push up gravel from stream bed to make a dam that washes out easily. That will need funding. I know you don't have an easy decision. I hope you select someone who is, who will provide a balanced approach, and will be a good representative for the people of this district. And I wish you well.
Thank you. Next. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Anthony Gutierrez, and I'm a lifetime resident of Grant County, and I'm here to support the appointment of Gabriel Ramos to the New Mexico State Senate. I've been a public servant myself for over 25 years, and have known Gabe for a greater part of those years of service to Grant County. I have also 20-plus years attending New Mexico State Legislative Sessions, and seen that in the past 10 years, nothing but attempts from special industries to destroy what I call the true culture of New Mexico. I'll give a few examples. There have been consistent attacks on the industries such as oil and gas, mining, which is the hub of our communities, ranching and farming, outside of the Rio Grande Corridor, and all of which provides the basis of the New Mexico economy, as well as the local economies they serve. There's also been additional requests for additional regulatory restrictions on public lands to eliminate uses of these lands by these same industries, as well as limited usage by hunters and sportsmen alike. There's also been several attacks on our Second Amendment rights, to, a right to bear arms. These are just a small example of what I call the progressive movement, which in my opinion, has shown no progress at all. I feel that we need a senator that will advocate for the rights of the people, in our special interests. Mr. Ramos has always been an outspoken advocate for the mining industry, which is a backbone of our local economy. Access to our public lands, responsible use of our natural resources. He also supports our ranching and farming industry, which is a huge part of our history and our local culture, as well as hunting and sportsmanship has made a huge contribution to our local economy as well. Mr. Ramos is a representative of what the Democratic used to stand for, and has shown that in his tenure as county commissioner. He has always stood for the protection of the rights of the people.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Next. Any further public comment? Yes.
Good morning. My name is Daniel Pena, of the District of Grant County. And I see your job today as nominating the person with the best chance of being appointed by the governor, representing the Senate. But that person is not Mr. Ramos. He has too many negatives associated with him. Personally, he has been my commissioner since I moved here, and I have not found him especially approachable, or willing to discuss opposing those of you. More important than my personal opinion is, he's a twisted and entrenched supporter of huge reversion, a project the governor has vowed to do all that she can to stop. And one of the things she can do to help stop it is nominate a senator who's going to be opposing her on that issue the first day. So, if you send, if you send for Mr. Ramos's name, she will reject it, and ask you to submit more names, so that she has a real choice. That process can take a long time, and we risk having any senator replaced when the legislative session begins, called a phase now. But second, Mr. Ramos has earned reputation in this community as an unethical businessman. When I came here five years ago, I was looking for homeowners' insurance, and several people volunteered that I should wear Mr. Ramos's practices. Nominate someone to be a senator that has that reputation, and otherwise will take his city office, so please nominate someone else. Someone who will have our trust and respect from the first day they're sworn in. You have many good candidates to choose from. The women candidates here today are all especially capable, and I encourage you to fairly and objectively evaluate with their strong qualifications, and nominate one of them. Any one of them would be immediately appointed by the governor, without hesitation, and would serve us well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, and I would like the Commissioners backing on this. I'm gonna speak with the attorney. Thank you again. Just a reminder, we're requesting positive comments, not negative. Next. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I'm Herb Tremo, and I reside in Silver City, and have been a longtime Grant County resident. I'd like to say a few words on behalf of our public servant, and current Grant County Commissioner, Mr. Gabriel Ramos. Mr. Ramos is a lifelong Grant County resident. He is one of us, completely. He was born in Silver City, and raised in Hurley, and he is married, and is a husband and father to two young children. He attended our local public schools, and earned a bachelor's degree in Business Administration from New Mexico Western University. Mr. Ramos has been a longtime public servant to this community. Gabe has successfully held various public offices, from serving on town council seats, school board member, youth sports manager, served two terms as a successful county clerk, and at the present is the leader, as the successful chairman of the Grant County Commission. Questionable use of AWSA funds seems like a moot point at this time, as the use of a portion of these funds will link the mining community and Silver City together. This is supporting the common good for the majority of the people of Grant County, and the needs of the United States Air Armed Forces, in this case, the United States Air Force. And in the interest of national security, having a positive position on exploring these armed forces needs is quite commendable. Mr. Ramos has been an advocate for the public making full use of our public forest lands by speaking out about keeping the current forest roads open, and helping in avoiding any questionable or end or unnecessary road closures in our forests. And as important and crucial as this senatorial position is to all--
Certainly, tag this up.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir. Yes, you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Garwahal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. Congratulations to you newly elected officials. You guys have a job and a half coming on you. And Commissioners, you have a tough job coming upon you this morning. I stand here, as I stood with Gabriel 20 years ago, when you were our county clerk. I know this man like the back of my hand. It's been a long time, but it's, I will stand here with him today, and I ask, and I pray, that you continue and support Gabriel for this position, because he is like a rhino. Tough skin, and that horn to move the garbage out of his way to get the job done. I know this family, Gabriel, Pathee, your kids, Mr. and Mrs. Ramos, Davy, and the rest of the Ramos. I played Barney for Erica's, I believe it was her second birthday. That's how well I know this family. And I continue to support Gabriel, and I, once again, I pray, so that Grant County can continue forward. What he says is he will get the job done. In June, the primary elections, Gabriel was out there campaigning for individuals on the county commission, working hard for you guys, in order for the commission to continue moving forward, as he left this December 31st. Gabriel, congratulations on an awesome servant that you've been, and I hope that you continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
My name is Luis Agüero, resident of Hurley, New Mexico. I want to go ahead and thank you Commissioners for allowing me to speak at this time. I would like to go ahead and speak about, we're hearing a lot of things about Democrats, Republicans. It's not about that. I want you people to understand, we need to send somebody up there, that is going to be able to represent our area, and to be able to go ahead and do the job that is required. Mr. Ramos, I am very appreciative. He ended up working on Diaz Avenue. He ended up being very instrumental in getting the lighting system, getting the sidewalks, and getting that street repaved. People have enjoyed that. That has helped us as far as crime, that has helped us as far as activities, for people to be able to utilize those sidewalks. And we need someone like that, that will go ahead and see projects through to their completion. Thank you very much. I do ask that you send Mr. Ramos's name up this year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Torres, and I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity. And I just want to ask that you send Mr. Ramos's name up to Santa Fe. I have known him for six years. I've worked for him for six years. And he's just been a wonderful person, and he has done so much for our community. And I see him on a daily basis, every single day, and I see the love that he has for our community. And he has worked very, very hard for the community and for citizens, and I just want to thank him for that. And I just, I just want to say that he has my utmost confidence to do great, to take the seats of, for Howie Morales, as I said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
I'm Hugh Epping, and I feel like I'm attending a testimony. I think, I would like to see our representative carry on the tradition of Howie Morales, emphasizing education, and local environmental issues. I think we have the opportunity to select a new senator who will carry on the educational emphasis that Senator Morales had. And I think we need to look at the other candidates, not just Mr. Ramos, and learn, and take advantage of their educational experience, in the education field, also in the environmental field. And I think we would be better served by having a representative that will carry on Howie Morales's activities, rather than go in a separate direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir. Er, I'm sorry. I can't see your face. With the hat, yes. Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, county staff, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Nancy Gordon. I've lived in Silver City 27 years now. I enjoy hiking and fishing. I used to be a bow hunter, till I got geriatric. I haven't heard the positions of any of the other candidates, but would like them to address a couple of issues that others might not bring up, like their support for hunting and fishing in this area. This is an important part of our culture and our economy. I'd like to see strong support for projects to improve hunting and fishing in our area, as well as continued access to state lands. I'd like to hear their views on Fort Baird, since the state has basically abandoned it. And I actually like the idea of a fishing pond at Fort Baird, if it's feasible. Lastly, I'd like to know if they can be open-minded about a diversion on the Hila River. There is a need for a permanent diversion structure at the top end of the valley for the irrigation ditches, so someone doesn't have to go in with a bulldozer and push up gravel from stream bed to make a dam that washes out easily. That will need funding. I know you don't have an easy decision. I hope you select someone who is, who will provide a balanced approach, and will be a good representative for the people of this district. And I wish you well.
Thank you. Next. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is Anthony Gutierrez, and I'm a lifetime resident of Grant County, and I'm here to support the appointment of Gabriel Ramos to the New Mexico State Senate. I've been a public servant myself for over 25 years, and have known Gabe for a greater part of those years of service to Grant County. I have also 20-plus years attending New Mexico State Legislative Sessions, and seen that in the past 10 years, nothing but attempts from special industries groups to destroy
...in getting the lighting system, getting the sidewalks, and getting that street repaid. People have enjoyed that. That has helped us as far as crime, that has helped us as far as activities for people to be able to utilize those sidewalks. And we need someone like that that will go ahead and see projects through to their completion. Thank you very much. I do ask that you send Mr. Ramos's name up this year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next?
Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Torres, and I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity. And I just wanted to ask that you send Mr. Ramos's name up to Santa Fe. I have known him for six years. I've worked for him for six years. And he's just been a wonderful person, and he has done so much for our community. And I see him on a daily basis, every single day. And I see the love that he has for our community. And he has worked very, very hard for the community and for citizens. And I just want to thank him for that. And I just want to say that he has my utmost confidence to do great, to take the seats of for Howie Morales as that set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next? Yes, sir.
I'm Hugh Epping, and I feel like I'm attending a testimony. I think I would like to see our representative carry on the tradition of Howie Morales emphasizing education and local environmental issues. I think we have the opportunity to select a new senator who will carry on the educational emphasis that Senator Morales had. And I think we need to look at the other candidates, not just Mr. Ramos, and learn and take advantage of their educational experience in the education field, also in the environmental field. And I think we would be better served by having a representative that will carry on Howie Morales's activities rather than go in a separate direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? Yes, sir. Er, I'm sorry. I can't see your face. With the hat, yes. Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Commissioners, county staff, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Nancy Gordon. I've lived in Silver City 27 years now. I enjoy hiking and fishing. I used to be a bow hunter until I got geriatric. I haven't heard the positions of any of the other candidates, but would like them to address a couple of issues that others might not bring up, like their support for hunting and fishing in this area. This is an important part of our culture and our economy. I'd like to see strong support for projects to improve hunting and fishing in our area as well as continued access to state lands. I'd like to hear their views on Fort Baird since the state has basically abandoned it. And I actually like the idea of a fishing pond at Fort Baird, if it's feasible. Lastly, I'd like to know if they can be open-minded about a diversion on the Gila River. There is a need for a permanent diversion structure at the top end of the valley for the irrigation ditches so someone doesn't have to go in with a bulldozer and push up gravel from stream bed to make a dam that washes out easily. That will need funding. I know you don't have an easy decision. I hope you select someone who is, who will provide a balanced approach and will be a good representative for the people of this district, and I wish you well.
Thank you. Next? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Anthony Gutierrez, and I'm a lifetime resident of Grant County, and I'm here to support the appointment. Gabriel Ramos of New Mexico State Senate. I've been a public servant myself for over 25 years and have known Gabriel for a greater part of those years of service to Grant County. I have also 20-plus years attending New Mexico State Legislative Sessions and seen that in the past 10 years, nothing but attempts from special industries groups to destroy what I call the true culture of New Mexico. I'll give a few examples. There have been consistent attacks on the industries such as oil and gas, mining, which is the hub of our communities, ranching and farming outside of the Rio Grande Corridor, and all of which provides the basis of the New Mexico economy as well as the local economies they serve. There's also been additional requests for additional regulatory restrictions on public lands to eliminate uses of these lands by these same industries as well as limited usage by hunters and sportsmen alike. There's also been several attacks on our Second Amendment rights to, a right to bear arms. These are just a small example of what I call the progressive movement, which in my opinion has shown no progress at all. I feel that we need a senator that will advocate for the rights of the people in our special interests. Mr. Ramos has always been an outspoken advocate for the mining industry, which is a backbone of our local economy. Access to our public lands, responsible use of our natural resources. He also supports our ranching and farming industry, which is a huge part of our history and our local culture, as well as hunting and sportsmen, which make a huge contribution to our local economy as well. Mr. Ramos is a representative of what the Democratic used to stand for and has shown that, and he's shown that in his tenure as county commissioner. He has always stood for the protection of the rights of the people.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Next? Any further public comment? Yes.
Good morning. My name is Mercedes, and I'm from Baird, New Mexico. And I'm here to ask for you guys to support Gabriel Ramos for senator. He has been here, sitting here in the county commission for eight years, and you guys have worked hand-in-hand with Howie Morales. Why reinvent the wheel when you got it going? It's moving forward. I believe not just Howie, but Rudy and all the other state justices that we have up there representing Grant County right now. You guys have done an outstanding job. Gabriel's done an outstanding job. We've had our, we've had our problems, our issues here in Baird County when it started back eight years ago. It's turned, it's getting for the better, and I ask that you guys consider Ramos, Gabriel Ramos, as the next senator. And thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir. Yes, you, sir. Yes, thank you. Okay. Here my man, you. Thank you.
My name is James Baldwin. I'm a Democrat and resident of Grant County. I support Mr. Michael A. Correia. He is level-headed. He comes to us without any biases. He comes to us without any owes or any dues. He comes from a very good family, a local family, and he is certainly a worthy candidate. He has proven himself to be worthy in all of his work, his dealings. He has not had any skirmishes with or with the law or circumventing the law. I do request your consideration for this gentleman. Thank you.
Thank you. Further? Ah, yes, sir. Did you want to go next? Yes, thank you. Yes. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sir. Okay. Joe Ray. So, yes, ma'am, go ahead, and then Mr. Ray. Sorry, Mr. Ray.
My name is Mary Gaiman. I want to thank everybody for being here, this opportunity. In my humble opinion, Mr. Ramos already has two votes from the other counties, and it seems to me, if I were governor, that I would want as broad a selection as possible, and so I strongly support either of the two women. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Ray.
Thank you. My name is Jose A. Ray Jr., and don't look so nervous after you guys. I want to support Mr. Ramos. I hope, I hope that you make us why his choice. Some of us are going to like it, and some of us are not going to like it. Mr. Ramos, I think, will have an input on Baird's issues and Everglade issues. We, in today's society, we're a cutthroat everybody. We shouldn't do that. We should not do that. We're here just for a little fun. And too many negative things have been said about, about candidates. Let's put that aside. We're here as human beings. We're here to do the best stuff that we can. Sometimes we mess up, sometimes we talk mess up. I support Mr. Ramos. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Carrie Lemon. I've been a longtime resident of Grant County, and to reiterate, thank you for providing this opportunity, for putting my voice. I just would like to offer, I don't have anything prepared officially, but what I would like to offer is you don't have an easy task. As a resident of Grant County, my request would be to look at the characteristics of the individual that you choose to send a name to, their ability to hear, their ability to listen, their ability to see multiple perspectives, and even empathize with opposing points of view. I will also add, as a woman, it would be pretty, I think, evolutionary to have a woman representing our, our district. So with that, I wish you the best of luck and trust that you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Further? Yes, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Chairman, everybody. My name is Robert Donnelly, and I've been a resident of Planet Earth for 81 years. Just happen to be here at the moment. A very important decision you'll have to face, and I don't envy you in that position at all. All I have to say is, let's give the governor a choice. And Mr. Ramos has already been nominated by 200 counties, so he's already named up there. Let's have someone else as an alternative so that the governor can make an informed choice. That's all I ask. I wish you the best, and I'll see you all later.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Dominic Dalberdeen, boarder raised here in Sorsita. And I just found out about this meeting last night, and so I don't know a lot about the candidates, but I agree with the previous person who spoke is that I think giving, having another option would be a really good thing to have. And also just want to say that I know Saya Hempel personally, and I think that she would be a very good candidate, both as far as being a very good listener and caring deeply for our community and for important, important issues that we face, all of us moving forward. This is a really, really important time for humanity to start to make some changes so that there is going to be a place for our future generations to live and so that there will be clean water. And so I recommend Saya Hempel for a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to speak, and congratulations to the two new commissioners. I'm glad that you're both sitting there now. The world is changing. Cultures are changing. Technology is changing. To talk about defending our historic culture in New Mexico is valid. It's good, but we also need someone recommended to the governor who can build for the new economy, build for the new technology, build for the new culture that is going to happen whether we want it to or not. One other thing I would ask you to consider, the old saying, when bulls fight, the grass suffers. And I would ask you to choose someone, recommend someone who you may not love, but you don't hate either. Thank you.
John Song is my name. I live in San Lorenzo.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Pete Proxen. I've been here 10 years. What I have to say is not particularly positive, and I don't necessarily think negative comments about a particular person who's being recommended for a position that I don't think he's qualified for is particularly negative. I think we need to send a governor, a person who is, let's say, much more grounded and much more sympathetic to views that he or she may not agree with than Mr. Ramos. I listened to, I've been to two meetings regarding the Gila diversion. Mr. Ramos came across as autocratic, unsympathetic to anybody else's point of view. It was very apparent to me that he was in favor of legislation, which was basically Republican. This is not a Republican area. It is an area that I think needs to be kind of shed the image of the good old boy system, which, by the way, almost we took issue with in the last commission meeting. We almost did not have this meeting because of the good old boy attitude in this county. I would sincerely hope that you look at all the candidates and send, send the governor somebody that she can relate to and work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Dennis Martin. I live in Silver City. My feeling is that the committee, that this meeting is here because the committee got ahead of itself. And for the community to be represented, I think that all qualified candidates with different points of view ought to be heard, and the nomination process ought to be opened up. And then when it's narrowed down and someone's chosen, then I think in that process, everyone will feel represented. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes.
Happy New Year. Hi. My name is Laura Rubelman, and I am a Democrat, and to put that in context, many of you may know me as a person that changes positions with Dr. Mazzanera's once in a while, running the forums, the Democratic forums. And the first forum, when we had five-member commissions, might have been the last time we co-sponsored the forum with the Republican Party. And our mission on the forums is to get people to talk about what is best for the people of our county and how to do it in the context of a person's vote counts and what a person thinks counts. And I know that you guys have a great responsibility to take all of that information and make a decision. And I would say that as far as what we've been talking about with negative, positive, and all that, does not depend on party, really. It depends on how you can govern best. And I would plead with you to, well, we heard your time is up. Okay. Thank you. That's what I plead with you. Please, please.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes.
My name is Larry McDaniel. I'm a resident of Silver City for the last 12 years, to some that makes me a newcomer. I'm here to ask you to do what is best for this senate district, to support someone that will continue in Senator Morales's tradition. That person is not former Commissioner Gabriel Ramos. I can tell you that senate leadership, Peter Worth, the floor, the senate floor majority leader, Mary Kay Payton, the president pro tem in the senate, neither of them would like to see former Commissioner Ramos representing this district in Santa Fe. Instead, their preference is clear. They would like to see a woman. I know that Senator Worth is very excited about the candidacy of Saya Correa Hempel. I also support Saya. I think that she will move the issues that are important to this county forward in Santa Fe with the support of senate leadership. If we send someone up there that is not supported by senate leadership, we are saying that we will send an ineffective person to Santa Fe for the next two years. We can do something better. We can send Saya Hempel up there, who will forward legislation about education and about health care and access to health care, the most important issues we face as a rural community. So I encourage you to support the nomination of Saya Correa Hempel. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Yes, sir.
My name is Tom McCauley. I've lived here for 68 years. Thank you, commissioners, for this opportunity. You know, we live in a rural part of New Mexico, as most of New Mexico is. We have a hard time having representation that will step up and represent rural New Mexico in Santa Fe and the northern part, including Albuquerque. I've heard some comments today about the governor, senate leaders. I suppose maybe some of you commissioners have received calls and pressures from folks in Santa Fe on who they would like. You know, I would just assume we didn't send someone who is already indebted to someone in Santa Fe. How are they going to represent us down here if someone in Santa Fe has already got their hooks in them and their support of them? So I ask you to send someone who will represent our concerns to Santa Fe instead of sending someone who will go to Santa Fe and come back and tell us what Santa Fe wants us to do. I think that there's one fellow who's stood up to special interest of all kinds and who has, will represent us good up there, and I think that's Gabriel Ramos, and I urge you to support him. Thank you.
Further public comment? Is there any further public comment before we go? Yes, sir.
Mike Morales. Good morning, new commissioners. Excited to have you. You know, boy, I've been in similar seats, and you guys have quite a decision, and you guys have a tremendous amount of high-quality candidates. A couple of the new candidates are very exciting to me. I really am looking forward to seeing what they do in the future regardless of the outcomes here, and hopefully they move forward. This is a, you know, we have an opportunity here. The person who's, who's nominated will have two years, and then they have the opportunity to win an election. If, with the lieutenant governor running the senate, we have the opportunity to have a Grant County resident, or two Grant County residents on the senate. This is huge. This is huge. If Michelle and Howie win a second term, we have the opportunity to have a Grant County resident, two Grant County residents on the senate for eight years. Monster. What that tells me is that one of the biggest things that I look at is who's electable, who's proven to be electable in this community and palatable in the rest of the district that is being represented, both Socorro and, and Catron Counties. You know, I was interested in this position. I actually developed a resume, and I was talking to a lot of people and gained some interest. Some people were disappointed that I didn't put in. Mainly it's because as I reviewed my resume, it paled to Gabriel Ramos. Now, that, you know, that being said, had I even lucked into this appointment, I would be losing in two years to Gabriel Ramos. That, that doesn't serve us when we're putting in two different senators. We're not gaining ground. We're not gaining seniority. We need to make sure that we have strong Grant County representation up in Santa Fe for hopefully eight years. And not that we have these other candidates. Honestly, if one of these other candidates is put in, I could support anybody, but I want, I want somebody who's there for eight years. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Is there any more public comment before we go to the next? Yes, sir.
Good morning, commissioners, numbers of the public. My name is Jim Goodkind, and like a lot of people here who are voicing how long they've lived in Grant County, just like them, I come from an equally long line of ancestors. What I want to say very, very briefly is I voted for Howie Morales. And if the commissioners choose to appoint someone whose views are radically different than Howie Morales, who was the choice of the voters, I would consider you are making a choice that disenfranchises me. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Further public comment? Further public comment before we go on to the next portion of the meeting and hear from the candidates? Okay, I see none. We'll move to number five, stands on the agenda. Consideration potential candidates for submission to the Governor's office relative to the state Senate seat, District 28 vacancy. I'd like to hear from the candidates for five minutes each. Commissioner Edwards will give you notice when we have one minute left. And we'll start with Mr. Armando C. Arzola.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Happy New Year.
Good morning.
But I guess it's time to go to work. Let me start by introducing myself. My name is Armando Arzola, and I go by Armandi Arzola. Born in Silver, raised in Bear. I'm a 1980 graduate at Colby High School. I served in the Air Force from June 1980 to October 2007. I have 30 years total federal military service, indians as a city councilman for the city of Bear. I am 58 years young and retired. I could be traveling, fishing, hunting, and enjoying life abroad, but I have chosen to serve my community and as citizens that I have grown to love and respect. I must be crazy. Currently, there is no military veterans in our legislature. I believe in balance. My interest in the New Mexico State Senate seat for District 28, vacated by now, Lieutenant Governor Howie Morales, in no way will I use this seat for personal or financial gain. I want to do what is in the best interest of our community, especially Grant County. Without a doubt, I know that I am the most qualified individual for the Senate seat. I bring honesty, respect, integrity, loyalty, and unselfishness. This seat is vital to Grant County. It needs to stay here. If it doesn't stay here, it will suffer economically. But this is just my opinion. I speak the truth, and I have not promised anyone anything. I'm doing this with good faith. To the Commissioners, put your fancy aside and make your own decision. Do what is right for this community. As Abraham Lincoln once said, "This is a government, all the people for the people." Some of us have forgotten this. I deserve to represent New Mexico as State Senator for District 28. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, please let me continue. If awarded the Senate seat, my first other side priority is education. Our educators are creating and looking for better-paying jobs. This is due to the lack of community support and not being given the resources to educate our children. This is wrong and not acceptable. We need to be held accountable as elected officials and give educators a tools to educate our children, to give them the opportunity for success. By the way, New Mexico is still ranked 48th in education in the nation. My second priority, VA, I understand the system better than they do sometimes. Each VA is funded. There are hundreds of VAs locally. Why do they need to travel 230 miles to Tucson, 300 miles to Albuquerque to receive their care when we have the ideal location to build a VA hospital, hopefully? There are a lot of legislative, other legislative issues like environment, domestic violence, and drug abuse.
One minute.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm open for any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the Commissioners, is this process... Is there any supplemental? Okay. Next, Mr. Brandon Peral.
My name is Brandon Peral. First and foremost, it was really nice to see our democracy in action this morning with the freedom of speech, everybody inputting their opinions. First and foremost, I'm the proud father of five beautiful children, Oliver, Gracie, Oscar, Ella, and Martine here who I have with me today. I am a musician, I am a teacher, and I have been involved in education for over 24 years, and I am a small business owner, and I love teaching and helping kids. I've always joked that if I won the lottery and had millions of dollars, I would still want to teach. My interest in the New Mexico Senate District 28 seat is simple, and for the same reason I chose to become a teacher, I want to be of service and help my community. I'm a lifelong resident of Grant County, and I am a product of the Silver and Colby schools. I graduated from Colby High School and received my degree in teaching from Western New Mexico University. If awarded this seat, it would be a great honor, and I would take this responsibility very seriously. I promise to produce results for all my constituents in my community. I am ready and determined to make things better for our children, our families, seniors, veterans, and small businesses. I want to be your Senator in Santa Fe. I have been inspired, and I am inspired, by the late, great Senator Benny Altimirano, who brought home the bacon for our community year after year after year. I'm inspired by our new Lieutenant Governor, Howie Morales. Howie and I grew up in the same neighborhood in Silver City, the Brewer Hill area. We went to school together and graduated the same year. I'm so proud of him, and he makes us all proud to be from Silver City. I'm a registered Democrat, and my political philosophies and beliefs for me are very much in line with Lieutenant Governor Howie Morales and Governor Michelle Lovan-Gresham. My legislative priorities include following through the list of priorities set in motion by our previous Senator, Howie Morales, and making sure that they all pass. I will focus on the many challenges within our public education system. I want to provide pre-K to everyone. I want to raise teacher salaries, invest in clean energy, provide CYFD all they need to protect our beautiful children, raise wages and attack crime in our area. I want to make sure everyone has access to quality, affordable health care, health care that includes behavioral health and addiction services. I want to make sure that all our veterans are taken care of. I want to invest in clean energy and continue the process of diversifying and growing our local and state economy for generations to come. I want to protect our water and our resources. God has given me a voice to sing with, and now I want to use it to be your voice in Santa Fe. If awarded this seat, I promise to serve honestly, humbly, with dignity, with strength, and compassion for all. I promise to listen to you, all my constituents in my community. I want to be your voice. Quiero ser tu voz. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. God bless you. Dios lo bendiga.
The next candidate has withdrawn officially, Cindy Provencio. The next candidate, Daisy Matson. Is Ms. Matson here today? We'll move on then. Mr. Gabriel Ramos?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. It's a great pleasure to be here today in front of you and in front of all the constituents. I really do appreciate it. You know, being that I'm one of the only people here that has ever been elected to office, I see that big target on my back, but I guarantee you, I will do my best and use my experience to do what I can for Grant County and my district. I'd like to say congratulations to our new Lieutenant Governor, Howie Morales. He is awesome, and he has some really big shoes that we're going to have to fill. I also would like to say congratulations to the two new county Commissioners, to our new probate judge, and to our assessor that's been with us for quite a while. We started together 20-some years ago. Born in Silver City, I feel that I am one of the best candidates. I was born to David and Rosemary Ramos, which my parents are here today. I'm married to my beautiful wife, Patricia, of 24 years, and I have two beautiful children, James and Erica, which are sitting here in the front seat. I was raised in Hurley, attended Colby High School, and I was educated at Western New Mexico University, where I earned a Bachelor's of Science degree in Business Public Administration. I started my service at a very young age, at 17, when I joined the United States Army National Guard. From then, and I served nine years, I also got elected. I was elected as one of the youngest county clerks in the state of New Mexico at age 25, where I created the county's first imaging system, served as a chairman of the clerkship for the whole state, served on the NMAC Board as a board director, and served on the NMAC Executive Board. I also was elected to the school board, where we had the privilege to restore two schools, where we spent $3.8 million restoring Hurley Elementary and now made a school of $8 million. I've also served as the Hurley Town Council and Mayor Pro Tem, where I had main projects when I first joined with the town of Hurley to reconstruct Villa Avenue, and that project came through, and we spent over $2.8 million on Villa Avenue, where we paved the roads and put in new sidewalks and lights. Then, I had the honor and the privilege to be elected twice to the county commission. During my time as a county commissioner, we built fire stations, many colonial projects, and construction of Tukas Substance Abuse Facility worth over $2.5 million of construction. Reconstruction of Grant County Government Center, $2.1 million. We also spent many monies at the Poton Park fixing drainage systems, batting cages for our children, and I'm very glad to say that I spearheaded with Santa Clara Mayor the Santa Clara Safety Project, which we were awarded $2.1 million, and which construction will start in 2020. Leadership roles in the county commission. I've chaired many different boards, Southwest County Commission Alliance, Goyet Amigos Transit Board, Echo Watership Group, Grant County Water Commission, and also I was a member of the Coalition of Governments. As you can see, I have spent the majority of my life serving either my country or serving my community. I'm also the only candidate in private business. I served because I want to serve my community, not because I was asked to serve by some special interest group. I stand here for the people. The experience I have in government sparks my devoted interest in District 28. The experience in being the only candidate that has multiple legislative and policymaking board experience makes me the best qualified for this position. I also took the time these last... One place. Thank you. These last few days, and I believe I gave you a copy of a petition that I had signed by 25 elected officials that support me for this position throughout the county. And I've been able to make those great friendships amongst the different elected officials because I've been involved. I'm not a newcomer. Legislative priorities of awarding this position would be taking care and protecting our elderly. Being a veteran, and there being only eight to 10 veterans on the Senate, I would be proud to be the next veteran on the Senate floor representing and protecting our veterans. Better education for our students, better pay for teachers, drug problems and mental health issues, taking care of our jobs and our labor force, protecting our water by keeping our water in the Southwest. Water is precious. I will work with the area county commission, municipalities, and air entities on capital outlet projects, which is one of the biggest and main duties of our state senator. I thank you very much, and I appreciate this opportunity, and I will do my best to represent everyone and listen to you, especially the county commission. I will definitely count on you for information on where we need to go. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. This is a really important meeting, and it's a very important position. At this point, I would like to withdraw my name from consideration, and I would like to support Saya Hempel for this position. I believe that I am qualified. I have experience with the legislature. I've been working there for four years. I'm a social worker. I believe I have a lot of interests in this community. But at this point, it is not my time. It is time for women of color to be coming into the state legislature. We don't... We are fairly short, and we need to be represented by women of color in this position. Therefore, I'm throwing my support behind Saya Hempel. Thank you very much.
I'm Mary Hopfit, Dr. Mary Hopfit. I'd like to tell you that at the inauguration, the Governor announced that all podiums will be lowered, and I would like Grant County to follow suit in this matter. I feel like an ant back here. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you Commissioners, new Commissioners, old Commissioners, for the time you gave me and all candidates in the last month. You have been terrific and open, and I appreciate that. And to all of you for supporting the various candidates, including myself, and for showing up and speaking your mind. That's great. I think my credentials, which I submitted to the committee, speak for my love of Grant County and for the state of New Mexico as an outsider. But I want to talk to you today on the theme of common sense. I'm a college professor, so you know how we are. Common Sense was written by Thomas Paine, and I want to talk about common sense in making this decision. First of all, we need to make the decision out of common sense of what is good for Grant County and for the state of New Mexico and not out of either fear or defiance of what other people have said about this position. Common Sense would speak to the idea that in our Senate, we need greater gender balance. So I would recommend to you strongly that you consider a qualified woman for this position because it sends a strong message from Grant County to the government that we are in favor of gender equity, which I believe we all are. Second of all, I think that we need to look at electability, as some people spoke to. What will go forward and who can go forward in 2020? Having been part of the electoral process here since the day I arrived, literally the day I arrived, one of the things I will say is it isn't just the candidate, it's who goes out for the candidate, who takes their hard-earned money and puts it toward the candidate, who will walk for the candidate, who will drive the rural routes with the candidate. Okay? That's important. So we want a candidate that will have the support of the worker bees, if you will, as well as those who have a little bit better checkbook that can support that candidate. So electability is important. That isn't always that those of us who are the old war horses are the most electable. Sometimes it's the new fresh voice. Common Sense says that we ought to be on the bandwagon that we have with, let's say, our new legislative person. So she taught us small, an outsider to politics who came in and swept CD2. I want that kind of person to be our new Senator up in Santa Fe. I want that kind of person to be our new senator up in Santa Fe. Now, the other thing that I want to see, and Common Sense to me dictates, is that we choose a person who's unifying and not dividing. We are a group of insiders, people who grew up here forever, and outsiders, people who came, as the governor said last week. I think we need someone who has, who can speak to both groups, who can speak to our two dominant cultures, Anglo and Hispanic. We are pretty much fifty-fifty in this county, and I like the idea that we're all represented by the person we choose. I think our senator, and now Lieutenant Governor, Howie Morales, has done that brilliantly. I also think our representative, Rudy Martinez, has done this job extremely well. And finally, I would speak to the fact that Common Sense, one minute, thank you, dictates that we do listen to the will of the governor and of the Senate leadership, that they do want a woman coming forward also for Grant County. And to that end, I want to give my support to Saya Correa Hempel. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, and audience, what I'd like to do is present to you my qualifications and some of the information about you for those of you that don't know who I am. I was born and raised here in Grant County. I was educated here in Grant County. I do have a Bachelor of Science degree. I spent all my time here, the majority of my time here, and I do have three decades of experience in public service for two counties and for the state of New Mexico, and I'll go through those. I do have experience with the governmental process at the federal level, the state level, and also the local level, and I'll go through the details very quickly. At the federal level, I testified before the United States Congress Subcommittee on Crime. I was nominated to represent rural law enforcement across this great nation. Myself and the sheriff from North Carolina were the two that were chosen to acquire funding for rural law enforcement, to provide training for small agencies who would never be able to afford the kind of training that we were able to acquire for them. We did receive that training, the training money, and we did, we do have that training for rural law enforcement, which did benefit several law enforcement officers here in Grant County and also in Luna County. I was also chosen to represent, testified before then Janet Reno, the U.S. Attorney General. I was given an invitation to give and a report on the southwest border issues, and the reason that I did that was because I needed to let Washington know the issues that were impacting communities on the southwest border, and that's what I did, and I hope that's what I accomplished when I gave my report to the Attorney General Janet Reno. I was also invited to report to the United States Drug Czar for also drug border issues. And as you can see, border issues are at the forefront of our nation right now, and they're coming back. They've always been an issue, and so I was able to also provide valuable information to the Washington representatives about the issues that were facing the smaller communities on the border, so they can understand what the impact is. And all I was trying to do at that time when I was doing these reports is to, I wanted to improve the quality of life for all of the individuals in the southwest border, and I hope that I did that. That's where my heart has been. I've been here in Grant County, in Luna County, all my life. I've dedicated myself to public service. At the state level, to give you an idea of what I've been at the state level for government, I was elected Legislative Chairman for the Association of Counties. I also was the President of the New Mexico Sheriff's Association, and during my tenure, I was able to work with one of the representatives, and we had a bill passed that would require a management training for newly-elected sheriffs. I was also asked to chair a committee to oversee the money that was coming in by the Bureau of Justice Systems, from the Department of Justice, the state of New Mexico receives for programming, and I was the chairman for that committee, and I was given the opportunity to work with grants management, as we reviewed all the proposals that were coming in for disbursement of that BJA money. So I did receive all of that experience in working with grants management and understanding the process at that level. I was also the Director of the New Mexico Gang Passports for ten years, and again, it was, it was a time that gangs were taking over, so we were able to provide connectivity. I've been a long-life resident here. I just want people to know that I dedicated. I was the originator of the domestic violence, El Rafugio, one of the original board members, and also Tucasa, and I can tell you that all this experience that I've had and all the dedication that I've provided to these communities, I've never forgotten where I came from, and I never will. So I thank you very much. Some of the legislative issues with behavioral health, I'd like to see a regional hospital to help the mentally ill, because I think they're being treated unjustly, by support the educational system and the teachers and their salaries, and also I think that we need to protect the water, because once the water's gone, we're not going to be able to pay for it, once we have to start paying for it. So I do want to, I do want to provide some kind of legislation for. I thank you very much for your time. I thank the audience for their patience and for listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Saya Hempel.
It's an honor to be here today and have this opportunity to introduce myself. I'm Saya Correa Hempel, and I am an educator for twenty-five years, a small business owner, a school psychologist, and a mother. And women like me don't typically hold political office. I'm not independently wealthy, and I have four children, including one with special needs. And but being involved in politics hasn't been part of my life plan, but in Grant County, where my family has lived for generations, we've continued to experience social and economic decline. In our schools, the budgets have been cut so drastically that teachers can't meet the needs of all of their students. And the community, people, our senior citizens, and people with disabilities like my own son are having a harder and harder time accessing affordable, quality healthcare. Our poverty rate is thirty-five percent above the national average, and families are having a harder time just making ends meet. And I realize that these are the people who need a voice. Those in our society who are most vulnerable need a voice. And finally, we have an administration who's willing to listen, and now is a time where we can make some real progress in terms of our social and economic growth. But that's only going to be possible with the right representation. We must have someone who can represent us, who can problem-solve and collaborate in a bipartisan way, and who understands the power of connection, that there's no place where my energy ends and yours begins. So what happens in your life affects me. So if there is a child who's hungry in Hurley, that affects me. And if there is a senior citizen in Santa Clara who can't afford to pay her utility bill, that affects me. Those are my strengths, being able to problem-solve and collaborate in a bipartisan way and connect with the people in our community in a deep, personal level because of the adversities that I've had to overcome in my own life. And my legislative priorities will be making sure that the people in our rural communities have access to affordable, quality healthcare. My son, who was diagnosed with bone cancer when he was four and had a left leg amputation, requires a wheelchair to get around, and it took us four years to get his wheelchair, multiple hoops that we had to jump through, and it's unreasonable that we should expect our citizens in our rural communities to have to wait such an extensive period of time and jump through so many hoops to get the medical care and the medical equipment that they need to maintain a basic level of quality of life. And we also need to be investing in our infrastructure that's so vitally important to our economic growth and development. We need safe roads, safe bridges, and internet access so that people can safely and efficiently access our rural communities. And help, of course, education. Education is so interconnected to the health and well-being of our communities. And New Mexico is found to be violating our children's constitutional rights by failing to provide an education where all children can succeed. And we have over seven-hundred-and-forty long-term substitutes teaching our children who don't have the skills and don't have the training that a certified teacher has. So we need to make sure we're paying our professionals like the professionals that they are. So we have a lot of work to do in education, and that includes adequately funding early childhood education and supporting our vocational training programs so that we are continuing to build a skilled workforce to support our economic development. And we need to make sure that our children have a safe place to go and there's no school in session. On Fridays, a lot of our students don't have school and after-school programs, and during the summer, our children need a safe place to go and connect with their peers. And it would be an honor to represent this district and together help create a safer, a healthier, and more prosperous community. Thank you.
Mr. Simon Ortiz has previously withdrawn his candidacy.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Given that withdrawal and having considered seven presentations, excellent presentations, I'd like to move to nominate Saya Hempel to the Governor to fill out his candidacy.
We have one more presentation.
Please.
Sorry, it's not on the agenda. Mr. Gilbert Guadiana, and the reason he wasn't listed in alphabetical is because he filed late. It was the, actually, the decision of county management that he be allowed to present. So.
Too bad it wasn't on here.
I apologize for that.
Not your fault.
Well, it is in the sense of I wasn't keeping track of the numbers. I didn't hear about this, and actually, I read about it when I was surfing the internet night before last, and that's when I submitted my application. So I apologize for the late submission. And with that, I'd like to say that I appreciate the opportunity to meet with this board, to present my views to the public who have not heard them. I am born and raised here. I was a graduate of Cobra High School. I went to Western New Mexico. I worked in Chino Mines for ten years. I served on the school board for two years at that time as well. I was fortunate to have some very good mentors and some very good support, and I was successful in my application to Harvard University. I graduated from Harvard University at the John Kennedy School of Government with a Master's in Public Administration. After that graduation, I actually came back to New Mexico in hopes of finding employment and found that difficult. I've made many friends in California, and they urged me to go out there. I worked for the legislature in the branch of the Auditor General's office, where we did reviews of performance, performance issues that arise in any entity that received over ten-thousand dollars of government funds. So it was federal, it was the regulation of hazardous waste, it was redevelopment revenues, effective use, it was the distribution of taxes, and pretty much anything that was open to them. And our reports were reported in national newspapers and usually front page because we weren't sent to places that were working well. We were sent to places that had some serious problems, and we had recommendations. One of my biggest findings actually came when I worked for the Employment Development Department, and we reviewed the short-term disability claims. We found that there was two-point-one billion dollars worth of short-term disability claims that really had no substantiation to merit their dispersal. These are, this gave me a strong infrastructure to really look at programs, working with the legislature, got to see the entire process, as they call it, the making of the sausage, the incredible amount of compromise, the incredible amount of process that is employed. With that, I started working in local governments. I worked for Orange County, and then I worked for Marin County. In Marin County, I was, and that's the other side of the Golden Gate. And it's an extraordinary place. I worked for the administrator, and I had oversight over the Health and Human Services Department, which had over a hundred-million-dollar budget annually. It had covered anything from employment to healthcare to behavioral health as well. And then I was promoted to the Assessor's Office, and I got to learn a lot about the tax base and how it affects the revenue streams of government. I came back to New Mexico when my father got ill. I worked at Ford Fair for a while and have a strong affinity to that property and hope to see it resurrect itself in grand style, which it has a great potential to. It's four-hundred-and-sixty acres of land that has an enormous potential to reflect even on its history of the soldiers that served there, the Buffalo Soldiers, the internment of the Nazis officers, the Buffalo Soldiers, the Apaches that were also living here. They all have a phenomenal place in that, and I would like to see something reflect that youth. I have worked in, I appreciate the comments that are needed in terms of reflecting in education. As I said, I was in the school board some time ago, I am currently in the school board. It continues to be one of my primary focuses of interest. I've worked in behavioral health. I've worked in, and I saw the conflict that was caused by the political changes in behavioral health. It served no purpose, and it still has a very difficult time finding its roots. I have worked with initiatives like Living Wage, and we did pass a Living Wage ordinance in Marin County. I firmly believe in what the lady said in terms of the people that are most disenfranchised are the poorest, and that's unfair. This is the government that we're supposed to represent. My favorite book is Les Misérables, and it depicts the struggle that I would like to fight in representing the people that are disenfranchised, the legal process that has challenges for people that cannot afford. We talk about health, that is certainly the biggest issue, I think, when you have some time. Okay. Thank you for your consideration and apologize for the lady.
Thank you. Before we begin the motion, I'd like to announce, as best as I can determine, there are six remaining candidates: Armando Arzola, Brandon Perrault, Gabriel Ramos, Michael Carrillo, Saya Hempel, and Gilbert Guadiana. I'd like, sorry?
Oh, thank you. We had to clarify.
Okay. And I'd like to, for each of the commissioners, or any of the commissioners who want to weigh in, about what would be the procedure going forward from this point forward to the end of the meeting. Do we want to take a motion and a second and a vote, or do we want to narrow the field? And anybody want to weigh in on that, or all?
Chair, you suggesting that we're not following Robert's rules today?
Which is?
Because we all, I always thought we followed Robert's rules of order, and that requires a motion and a second for discussion. That's why many times in our meetings, I will say, for purposes of discussion, I move blank.
Okay.
Because at least according to that rule, that's how you do it.
Okay. Well then, does anyone want to make a motion concerning the rest of the meeting?
As you heard, I'd like to move that we nominate Saya Hempel to fill the seven, just to twenty-eight seconds.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second at discussion. My discussion would be that we could vote on this or follow Robert's rules of order. Is this what we want to do? Do we want to vote now? Are you ready to vote?
Robert's rules of order, I'm here, you have to vote.
Sorry, you're out of order. This is a discussion.
Don't you agree with that discussion? Yeah. So you agree to have discussion, yeah.
Well, I'd like to weigh in. First, I'd like to make a few comments, though, with that view of things.
I think so, yeah.
Well, you know, I totally appreciate the gravity of this decision for the county. Okay, this is probably going to be the decision that impacts this county more than anything in the next four years that we do. I'd love to see all the people here, and I appreciate their comments, their opinions, accept the diversity that we have in our county. That is fantastic. You see the group of people that we had for candidates. You have a great group of people. What makes things difficult also is that we're a small county, and as such, we know each other. You know, I know most of the candidates, I know most of them very well. That in itself makes the decision even tougher. So I want everybody to know that we have all done our due diligence. I mean, I've all agreed, but we've all studied all the issues, we've different, gone through different scenarios, we know the facets of this. So whatever decision we come and we make, it's not going to be something that is spur-of-the-moment, something that has been done to please other people, that it's going to be truly what we think is going to be the best for our county. Okay? With that said, I would like to narrow the field so that maybe we could ask our two questions. And other than that, I would like to take a small recess before we do.
Please question.
Can I speak to just one of the process points?
Yes, thank you.
If it's absolutely essential to take a recess for some reason, I can withdraw my motion, but while we have that motion there, a recess would be inappropriate. Now again, if it's essential, I have to withdraw it.
With, so I think it's, we're having a discussion on the motion, so. I think I would prefer at this time to support your recommendation to narrow the field. And we could do that through a motion. We're having a discussion on that motion, you're out of order. Sorry, let me get my thoughts back. So, and then we'll get back to you.
Yeah, I'm curious what it would look like other than voting on the motion. You're suggesting some other motion in which we say it will be one of the following X number of people? Is that how you propose to narrow the field?
I think through a, through a motion and a second, we would choose two or three candidates to narrow the field.
Is the advantage of that over the position we're in right now? I guess I feel like we already have narrowed it based on some withdrawal.
We do have that. We are down to six, I recognize that. I think the advantage of doing that for me, and obviously, we need to ask Mr. Sol, but would be that we would be speaking about two or three and not six, but.
You know, I think to me, it's just being fair to the candidates. I mean, we heard quite a bit from the public, we heard quite a bit from the candidates, and the biggest thing is I want to be fair to them. I want to take in everything that they've said. You made a motion, am I ready for that? I don't know yet right now. You know, I'm trying to process some of this, you know, because we want to be fair. This is something that affects Grant County that just doesn't affect us up here. So that's what, that's my thing right now with all this.
Which is to say you support a recess, is that what you're saying? Or is that about?
I could support a recess and take 10, 15 minutes, if that's okay, to go over some resumes, look at some of the stuff as to what we have here, and go from there. That's, that would be fine with me, though.
I think the danger in that is that the commissioners can't be talking to each other, of course.
That's fine. I think it would be really important for us to be very clear that we are not having a background discussion about this.
That would be to stay here and consider whatever we want to consider.
I would support that.
Other than the bathroom break that one or two of us might need.
Well, we could do that one at a time.
That's essential to me, you know. But also, I like, I am also with Commissioner Ponce that I want just a few minutes to reflect. Because of the importance of this decision, I want to go over some of the notes that I made, I want to go over some of the resumes. I don't want it here in my mind that I've made the best decision that I can. So even if we don't go anywhere, I want a few minutes to reflect on.
And can I ask, would you prefer to do that before or after I give my rousing speech, which I prepared? In actuality, I can hold it, obviously, or I can say it before if you want to include it in your consideration.
Sure.
I'm just trying to figure out how you want across the board.
I just want to take a, on the first thought.
Yeah.
I just want to take a few minutes to reflect on it before we vote.
And do, is there any more discussion on narrowing the field, or is that a good point? Okay. Mr. Ponce?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so.
A little recess now because there's some urgent needs.
Thank you. So we'll take.
You have to withdraw your motion.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
So I'll move that we take a 10, 10 or 15? A 10-minute recess.
So we'll reconvene here at 10:47. And we'll need a second.
Do we need a second?
Okay.
Chair, we call a recess.
Thank you. We'll call a recess, we'll reconvene here at 10:47 a.m. Call back to order.
Chair, I would just take my motion here.
Go ahead.
I think I need a second. I move that we nominate Saya Hemphill to fill. Do we have to replace how we're running, because our district 28?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I suppose I have something.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
As all of us have, I have received a huge amount of input about this decision. Some of that input has been very negative about one man of the candidate, but the majority has focused on the positives of one or more of the many excellent candidates we've got. And this is what I would like to do, starting by expressing my great appreciation for the commitment all of you have made to work for Grant County as volunteers in our state capital. Thank you so much for that. In her inaugural address, our new governor also emphasized the positive as she looked ahead to her next four years in office, and of course, we hope eight. She asked us to set aside pessimism and to hold out our best ideas about what New Mexico can become. This process, she said, begins in our homes, our schools, and our communities. And I quote, "Whether your family has been here 12 generations or you moved here last week, we will do this together, and the result will be a national model for productive growth, smart and purposeful steps forward, a better New Mexico, a thrive in New Mexico, made better because we did the work to build it side by side." Her list of several more specific initiatives started with truly revolutionizing, her words, public education in New Mexico, including tapping the permanent school fund to support pre-kindergarten for every three- and four-year-old New Mexican. She went on to advocate raising the state's minimum wage, investing in infrastructure, improving our stewardship of the environment, and dramatically increasing our clean energy production. I believe several of the candidates, as we've heard today, have the vision, intelligence, persistence, and focus needed to help our new governor achieve these goals. And I believe they will be in a stronger position to work for Grant County as a result of being part of the governor's team. But one rises above the rest, in my estimation. She combines the best of both parts of what can sometimes seem a divided Grant County: old timers and newcomers. Her roots in New Mexico go back to the 1600s. She was mostly raised in a mining district. She graduated with two degrees from WNMU. Yet she herself was not born here, and indeed, was not even a U.S. citizen for many years. She was a dreamer before we even had the term. And she understands well, as a result, and as a result of other personal circumstances, the plight of individual citizens fighting large bureaucracies. And while she dreams big, she is an incredibly hardworking and focused individual, which I know from firsthand knowledge because I am fortunate to work only a few doors away from her office. She has managed immense personal challenges with great dignity and has, at the same time, forged a very successful professional career. She has the support of her employer, the Senate leadership, past commission candidate Cindy Provencio, and we heard two other candidates back from today, and most importantly, she has the strong support of her beautiful family. I'm proud to say she has my full support as well. Fellow commissioners, I urge you to join me in nominating Saya Correa Hemphill to fill our District 28 Senate vacancy. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I agree with much that Commissioner Brown, if not all, said about his nominee. And second that, and I would, there were a few that rose to the top, there's no question, and Saya, especially being one of those, I met with her for about an hour yesterday and found what she had today, to say fascinating and educational for me. There was another candidate that rose to the top for me, and I'll wait till if there's a chance that he's nominated and seconded, to speak on his behalf.
I agree with what he said about Saya. Very intelligent, talked to, you know, great person.
We can, we have your, 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 your. Get along, man.
You know, I agree with Commissioner Brown. I got to know her a little bit. She's a great person, and I agree with what you said there.
I'm going to echo that agreement. I've known Saya for a long time, and as a matter of fact, I sort of consider her part of my family. And not only Saya, but the rest of the candidates that were willing to come up. Two thousand seven jobs is not going to be easy. They're going to be in a lot of time away from home, from family, and having to make some very hard decisions. And I'm glad that we have people out here that are willing to do that and are committed to that. And Saya, thank you so much because you make this even more difficult than it is.
Mr. Chair. So I would also like to thank everyone who, all the members of the public who spoke today. I'd like to sincerely thank all the candidates who, as Commissioner Brown said, volunteered a lot of time and energy to work for Grant Catherine in Socorro County in Santa Fe. And oh, by the way, would be, I would certainly like to see one of the things that the new administration work on, is paying our senators and representatives for the jobs that they do. And maybe looking at something other than a 30- and 60-day session. It's going to take a lot of your strategic strength straightened out, and I think we need to be thinking about how, how we can encourage everyone to be able to participate in that process, and not everyone can because of how we currently run our legislature. I don't often like to, I try to be as bipartisan, ungendered, et cetera, et cetera, as I possibly can, but I do have to say that I truly believe in my heart that we need to have more gender equity in our Senate. I truly believe that when women are part of governance, governance goes better. We think about the world in a different way, and I'm not saying that any way is better than the other, but we really, really, really need that balance of ideas and thoughts and processes and how we go about the business of making sure that our most vulnerable citizens have access to things like healthcare indication. So I am in very much in favor of Saya's nomination to the Senate.
Having just realized that I may not have an opportunity to speak on my candidate, depending on how the vote on this motion goes, I would like to speak in favor of Mr. Gabriel Ramos. He has been, as was said, a longtime community servant, and I appreciate his love of and work with the youth of this county as he coached and taught, and I'm impressed by his family and, and I didn't know him very well at all two years ago, but I've learned that when he says something, I can take it to the bank. And in this political arena, and even in county government, I was surprised to learn that you can't take what everybody says to the bank. But Mr. Ramos was honorable, and it took me a while to learn that when he said it, I could count on that. And finally, finally, he earned my trust completely. He has run a small business with employees, that's important to me. It's, small business generates jobs and money to this economy, and he has an understanding of that. I'm afraid that's something that too many of our legislators don't have an understanding There was some, some negative comments sent to many, sent to me by many, and it was repetitive, and the repetitive nature of that and the like nature of the negative comments and the accusations lead me to believe that it came from one source, not many. I want everyone to know that I looked into what was sent, and it was completely, complete. There was vindication. There was no fraud, as people just threw out that word so loosely, and it's plain. Mr. Ramos has been elected to office many times, has been mentioned, and what may have not been mentioned is the overwhelming support he has from this community. And I think he is a very diverse candidate, and I think he represents diversity. I want to say that, and this is no, this is not against Mrs. Hemphill, but I think that it's been mentioned that we give the governor a choice. And I think after reading the statute very carefully, it's, it's the county commission's job to make that recommendation that doesn't flow from the top down, and there's wisdom in that statute. It comes from we, the people, not Washington, D.C., or in this case, not Santa Fe. I probably could digress and go a little farther, but the legislator, Senate leader from, from Santa Fe and his bullying tactics, I think will be short-lived. I think once we send a candidate up there, Mr. Ramos is going to win over the people and in the legislature, and I think he'll represent as well. I think he can step into Howie's shoes. He's close with Howie. I've talked to Howie. I knew Ben DiAlteverano well, going clear back to the time when he delivered groceries to my great-grandmother, who knows the little boy from Ben's Market, basically. I think Mr. Ramos will be a good replacement there. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Edwards' comments on things, I love women, and I think things look better when women have an influence. I also think that it is, my, let me put it this way. My wife would tell me that she would think that it's discriminatory, discriminatory to pick someone on the basis of their gender, whether it's a man or a woman. I hope that we get a chance to nominate this. I, I hope that we get a chance to nominate Mr. Ramos and send him to the legislature. So, okay. Chief of Commons? We have a motion on the table, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, all opposed?
No.
No? Motion fails. It'd be my, my pleasure and privilege to nominate Mr. Gabriel Ramos to take the 28th District Senate seat.
Okay.
Motion and two seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations, Mr. Ramos. And thank you to all the candidates. Yes, could you say yours?
I know this was a very hard decision for you all and I could appreciate it because we've had very many tough decisions to make when I was on the commission. And I thank you so much for this opportunity. And I tell you one thing, I will speak to you for the people. And please come and see me. I know people say they haven't, they haven't been able to speak to me, but it has been much effort. Please come see me. Thank you so much.
Is there anything for?
Mr. Chair? I move that we adjourn.
A second? Yes, it's been moved in second. I have one in house, but can I get you to hold that motion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. This is probably pale news in comparison with what's been done today, but yesterday I got what I consider an exciting communication. Sorry, excuse me. I got what I consider to be an exciting communication from Advanced Air relative to 10-pack chips to Albuquerque, sorry, a little shaken. And so they're going to be offering 10 round books to South City, Albuquerque, one way for $62 and some cents, which I think is very reasonable, very affordable, and combined with newer cleaner, faster planes, and hopefully much more reliable service, I think we've got something really going for Grant County there. Now there's a motion to adjourn in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Meeting adjourned.